All right, we're gonna, we're gonna call to order. We do have a quorum, we're missing Mark Lyon today. If everybody will join me with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. As your three fathers for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the staff report into record or to amend.
I'll make a motion to accept staff report.
All right, I got motion to accept.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
I got a first and a second to, to accept the staff report into record. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve or to correct the minutes from our March 12th, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 12th meeting.
All right, I have a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I got a motion to approve and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. I will turn the time over to Cassidy to tell us about the Board of Commissioner meeting.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So last month during the March 18th Board of County Commissioner meetings, art meeting, the, all of the Maverick related hearings that we had were approved. So that was the partial vacation of the Covered Wagon Park subdivision, the zoning map amendment to change it from mobile home and rural residential to commercial. And then also the final plat of the Maverick Sweetwater subdivision and the variance for the Maverick signage that was proposed. So all of those were approved.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll, did anybody have any questions for Cassidy?
Comments? No.
All right, well, that will move on to the public hearings. Before we start this, I do have a conflict of interest for the first two hearings as my office has done some work for Crown Towing. So I will excuse myself and then turn the time over to Commissioner Richards.
All right, Cassidy, let's see what we got for hearing number one.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So the first hearing that we have today is a zone map amendment. Applicants are Zachary and Elizabeth Crone with Crown and Towing and Recovery. This is for a, about 27.7 acre parcel. And the current zoning is agricultural use. Current infrastructure there is pipeline road, Interstate 80, and it's within the WAMCutter Fire Response Area. So what the Crohn's are proposing here is to, to change the zoning on this parcel from agriculture to light industrial so that they can accommodate their growing towing and recovery operation. The minimum district size for the light industrial zoning district is 10 acres. And so this parcel certainly meets that. And that part won't be an issue at all for, for them meeting that minimums district size. Here's our zoning map and you can see they're surrounded by agricultural zoning here and it's also right off of I-80. We did post our public notice. There's two signs because the next hearing will also be for the same parcel. And that just brings us right into our review criteria for a zone map amendment. So the first is that the amendment is consistent and compatible with the current resolution and the comprehensive plan. And staff finds that it is, this is a, a good spot, we feel for, for the zone map amendment and the purposes for them doing this because the next hearing will be for a conditional use permit for towing and recovery business to be on that.
Did you say is or isn't?
Is, sorry.
I'm sorry.
It is a good spot. The proposed zoning and use are suitable for the existing topography. The third one is that the proposed zoning is compatible with existing or allowable uses of adjacent properties and neighboring zoning districts. We're again surrounded by the agricultural zone district, fairly intense zoning district. And it's also located outside of the growth management area. So we do feel that this is compatible with the allowable uses in, in this area of Sweetwater County. Our fourth review criteria is that the proposed zoning can demonstrate adequate public facilities, including roads, drainage, potable water, sanitary sewer, police and fire protection, all of those things. So at the time when we sent out the staff report, the applicants were working to attain an access easement. They have made a significant amount of progress on this. We do have documents from Quailay Properties that are the adjacent property owners that they needed to gain an access easement from in order to access this parcel legally. And they do intend to sign and grant them an easement for access once they've purchased the property. So currently the Crohn's don't own the property, so they wanted to wait until they've purchased and then they'll have the legal access that they need to access the property there. Um, let's see. The applicants have also worked with Sweetwater County Public Health regarding septic. And there's a letter included there from Sarah Jeffries from Sweetwater County Environmental Health that does state that she is okay with them using a, like an RV as a temporary office space. And then they'll manage the waste until they have the time to build an actual shop on the structure or on the property. So that part has been taken care of as well. And then regarding fire protection, I spoke with Sweetwater County Fire Warden Alan Adams, and he stated that the access road to the parcel is adequate for fire protection measures. Our fifth criteria is that the amendment shall not adversely affect adjacent properties, communities, or the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Sweetwater County. We did receive some comments from the adjacent property owner, Quailay Properties, that they had some concerns. We'll go into that a little bit further, but ultimately they have agreed to grant these guys access. And the comments that they brought up, I've included them in here so you can see what their, their concerns were. However, I do feel that they have been addressed. And the district, the request does conform to all applicable provisions of this resolution.
Anything else? I guess we can move into public comment.
So, well, I, so I do have a few more things.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So we received public agency comments from Jared Larson. He's for Phillips 66 on behalf of Pioneer Pipeline Company. And they just wanted them, us and the applicant to know that there's two pipelines crossing on the north end of the parcel. And they, they just need to be mindful of, of those and do an 811 prior to any demo, demo or construction. And as long as they don't do any construction or storage within the right of way, Phillips 66 doesn't have any concerns. In addition to that, and the applicant has gone ahead, they've done the 811. And they've also submitted a site plan to us that indicates that they won't have any storage or construction within the right of way. Here's our comment from Alice Schaffer of Quailay Properties. So basically the, the main concerns here is that there are the pipelines. And so Alice was concerned about how that might be impacted by this zone map amendment. And then, let's see. Okay, she did have some slightly different comments for the next hearing, so that's why I just wanted to go through. But, you know, in terms of how those pipelines would be impacted, the Crohn's have done a good job in coordinating with the owners of those pipelines and, and resolving any issues that may happen there. Ryan Reed, Senior Mining Engineer, says the property has no AML concerns with regard to abandoned historic mines. Joint Powers Water Board had no comment. And with that, staff does recommend approval of this zone map amendment from agricultural zoning to light industrial zoning with the following conditions. First, that the legal access to the parcel is obtained by Zachary and Elizabeth Crone within three months of approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Second, the zoning of the property will revert to agricultural from light industrial if the parcel is not purchased by the Crohn's. And then third, the zone map amendment is conditioned upon the approval of Zachary Crone's conditional use permit application by the Board of County Commissioners, which will be, the conditional use permit will be heard next. And that's all I have, Mr. Vice Chair.
Would the applicant like to come up and say anything? Nah, I'm good. You guys have any questions from Cassidy?
No, I think with the concerns with, you know, the pipelines, as long as the staff, I'm looking at this. Really, this is pretty cut and dry. It's pretty easy. I have no problems with any of this.
With that, I'll open it for public comment. Anybody like to come up and say anything on this for or against? And this, I'll close public comment and what would you guys like to do?
I make a motion that we approve with the recommendations from the staff. The zone map amendment with the public hearing number one.
I'll second that motion.
Now, we have a first and a second with that. Let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, carries?
Aye.
We'll move on to number two.
Okay, thank you. So our second hearing today is also going to be for the same parcel. So I won't go, you know, too much into that again. But this one will be for a conditional use permit for a recovery and towing yard by Zachary Crone. We've got our public posting. And of course, for this conditional use, we do have some additional review criteria that we go through. So the first is that the salvage towing recovery yards, they can't be established within 600 feet of a church, school, or residential zoning district or within one mile of a recreational facility. This location easily meets all of those requirements. Our second is that the hazard waste inventory identifying possible storage or discharge of hazardous wastes. Our applicant will be responsible for maintenance and proper disposal methods in conformity with the EQ regulations. C and D get into screening requirements. So this is for any property that is abutting a less intense zoning district or is within a special overlay district within the growth management area. In, in discussing with Eric, we, we talked about how we don't necessarily feel that the agricultural zoning district is a less intense zoning district because of the, the different uses that are allowed on that zoning district, less intense than light industrial. And this is outside of the growth management area. So we've concluded that the property does not require screening based on our zoning resolution. For E, staff does not recommend any stacking of vehicles. No stacking of vehicles is allowed over six feet in height unless that's approved by the board. Overall, we're just not recommending that vehicles be allowed to be stacked. F, the business must be licensed with the state of Wyoming. Crown Towing and Recovery License, or Crown Towing and Recovery is licensed with the state of Wyoming. They've provided that information to staff and we do have that on, on file. And then the final one here is that the conditional use for an impound salvage and storage yard for vehicles shall be termed to two years, at which time a new application may be submitted. Subsequent conditional use permits may be termed for a period established by the board. So this would be their initial approval for that first two-year timeframe. Okay, we did receive some more public comments here, and these are largely the same. Jared Martin with Soro wanted to let them know about the existing pipeline that they had to the north of the property and asked that the applicant reach out to him, and they have done so. And then Jared Larson, Phillips 66. This is the same comment from the, the previous zone map amendment as well. And they've, they've addressed this, done the 811, submitted the site plan. We did have a couple of additional comments by Alice Schaffer from Quailay Properties. She was concerned that there will be propose, what's being proposed is that here coming down the pipeline soon, there could be two prospective wrecker and recovery businesses within a mile of each other. They will be close. Our other hearings that we have today are for another, for a variance and then a zone map amendment. And later down the line, the purpose that they're having that zone map amendment is so that later down the line, they might apply for a conditional use permit for another wrecking business. And we can kind of talk about that when we get in, but she's just concerned about the proximity of those two businesses next to each other. As far as land use department is concerned, it's, you know, free market up to the applicants if they want to operate that near to each other because the requirements are met for, for these. Let's see. The pipeline issues have been addressed here. The access road. So Alice was kind of concerned on this and wondering, you know, who would be in charge of upkeep of that road, of maintaining it and, and all of those things. That's something that's going to be between the applicant and the grantor of the easement, the access easement. So, and, and I've spoken with Alice and I know that I've put the applicants all in contact with the commenters as well. So they've had chances to, to talk and to discuss these things. And that'll bring us to our recommendation. And we do recommend approval of this conditional use permit with the following conditions. The first is that the conditional use permit is conditioned upon approval of the zone map amendment by the Board of County Commissioners. Second, no stacking of vehicles is allowed. Third, conditional use permit is limited only to the storage and impound of vehicles. Fourth, the conditional use permit is approved for a period of two years from the date of approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Fifth, the conditional use permit is in effect during the said two-year approval period as long as the business remains in compliance with county regulations and holds a valid Wyoming vehicle storage and disposal facility license. And then the sixth is that the conditional use permit is personal to Zachary Crone for the parcel that we've spoken about today only. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Any members have a question?
Um, not really. I mean, I don't, I don't see any problems with any of this. I really don't. This Alice lady, she's a little concerned, but I don't think there's any reason to be concerned for two entities that do the same thing, you know, next to one another. I, I'm all for it, so I have no problems with this.
And would the Ebsken like to step up and say anything?
Like to say that there is not a towing company within a mile. I think that's also this towing company is in WAMCutter, Conoco, which is like 20, 25 miles down the road. And then we do have the AT&amp;T line at the bottom of the property and the pipelines at the top. So what we're gonna do is just leave those outside of the fenced area. And that way everyone can have access to their, their pipelines and everything, and it won't be any issue. And I just would like to also say that we do not like to have a bunch of vehicles, even at our tow yard now. Our goal is to get vehicles back to customers, get them out of here. We do not want a salvage yard by any means. We do start title processes by days after we get a vehicle and we get them to the recycling center or to back to the owner, wherever they need to go. So don't think that we're gonna have like hundreds of vehicles on the side of I-80, because that is definitely not our goal.
The only thing that we've ever talked about, well, that I've talked about on some of these meetings with tow companies is the hazardous waste, you know, you're bringing in wrecked vehicles and contaminants on the ground, and that's one of the concerns. And when this comes up in two years, we will go out and probably look to make sure. That's the only thing I could recommend to make sure that keep it clean. I mean, get the vehicles in and out. I mean, that's, you know, more, a lot of, more about that than I would ever. But yeah, I, I like what you're doing. It needs to be done.
Thank you. At this point in time, I will open the hearing up to public comment. Anybody with anything to say, step right up. At this time with no comments, I will turn this back over to the board and what would we like to do?
I make a motion that we accept the public hearing number two for the conditional, conditional use permit with stack, staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
With a first and a second, let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, I guess this time let's take a five-minute break and I'll go find Rob and bring him back.
Perfect, sounds good.
All right, I guess we will continue. Thank you, Commissioner Richards. Move on to public hearing number three, Susan C Chapman, Towing and Repair Incorporated for a conditional use renewal. I'll turn the time over to Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are hearing a renewal for the conditional use permit for Susan C Chapman, LJD Towing and Repair, Inc. This is for lots four and 15, a block 15 of the fifth section of the Mountaineer subdivision. So 7146, Foothill Drive and 162 Pyramid Drive, they're like adjoining properties. Current zoning for this is commercial and it is located within the growth management area. Our infrastructure here is Pyramid Drive, Foothill Boulevard. It's within fire district number one response area. We've got Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion Energy Gas, and White Mountain Water and Sewer District. So LJD Towing and Repair has been operating an impound and towing yard at this location since approximately 1996. When, in 2023, YDOT was in the process of updating their records and making sure companies were in compliance with local regulations. So after Susan received a call from YDOT about this, she reached out to staff to see what needed to be done to make sure she was in compliance with county and state regulations. And we did not have any records indicating that this location was approved for an impound and storage yard, but it had been in operation for, you know, since 1996. And because Susan was so willing to help clean up the area and to work with the county, we did move forward with helping her get a conditional use permit for this, for this operation. So we do have our public posting here. This is out north of Rock Springs. And we'll go ahead and jump into that review criteria. So the, the thing that's a little bit different about this one is it is really not, not compliant with the resolution that we have. However, this yard was granted a variance and a conditional use permit in 2023, allowing it to be operated at this location. And the owner has done a lot of work to make sure that they're keeping it nice and, and complying with the things that we ask them to do. So it is about 60 feet from residential property from the 162 Pyramid side of the west part of the property. And on the east part of the property, it's about 250 feet from the residential properties. Nearest church is roughly a mile to the south. For the second requirement, hazardous waste inventory, identifying possible storage or discharge of hazardous waste, that is going to be the applicant's responsibility for maintenance and proper disposal. for maintenance and proper disposal methods and conformity with DEQ regulations. For C, screening made of uniform material and built to a uniform height. Susan has complied with the screening requirements. It looks really nice out there. That's been taken care of. No stacking of vehicles is happening out there. Staff does not recommend the stacking of vehicles. If the business must be licensed with the state of Wyoming, the applicant has provided a copy of their vehicle storage and disposal license to staff, so they, we are satisfied that they're licensed with the state of Wyoming. For G, our final requirement here, that the conditional use for an impound salvage and storage yard for vehicles shall be termed for two years, at which time a new application may be submitted. And then the use permit may be termed for a period established by the board. Staff would like to propose that this becomes approved for an indefinite period of time because Susan has already gone through this process once for the the two years. We received a couple of different agency comments, but everybody had no concerns here, all clear, no comments. And with that, that brings us to the staff recommendation and staff recommends approval for this conditional use permit with the following conditions. First, the conditional use is limited only to the storage and impound of vehicles. Second, the conditional use permit is personal to Susan Chapman for both lot four and five, or four and fifteen, sorry, of block fifteen, Mountaineer Fifth. The conditional use permit is in effect indefinitely as long as the business remains in compliance with county regulations and holds a valid Wyoming vehicle storage and disposal facility license. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Cassidy. Would the applicant like to step forward and if you have anything you want to add? Can you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Sean Doan.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. All right. Does the commission have any questions for Cassidy or?
Okay, we did this in two thousand twenty-three, so yeah, nothing's changed.
Okay.
Getting better. I drive by it every day.
Yeah, so with that, we'll move on to the public hearing portion. If anybody has anything they want to say about this, now is your time. All right, seeing none and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and I'll open it up to the commission. If you have anything you want to add? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we extend the conditionally use permit for I lost the address. For Susan Chapman with staff, staff recommendations. And back to our, and make this one indefinitely in this.
All right, I got a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
All right, I got a first and a second to approve with staff recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? All right, motion carries four to nothing. All right, we will move on to public hearing number four. Brian Smith on behalf of Jody Young for a variance for a minimum, minimum district size, and I'll turn the time over to Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, this one will be variance for minimum district size. The applicants are, it's Brian Smith on behalf of Jody Young, property owner is Charles and Jody Young. Current zoning on this property is commercial. The infrastructure here is, it's within Long Center Fire Response Area, and then we're also right off of Interstate eighty. So basically, the the reasoning for this variance and the purpose behind this hearing is that Charles and Jody Young are looking to sell their property and they would like to change the zoning from commercial to light industrial to better meet the needs of a potential purchaser they have lined up. Currently, the, so the the zoning here is commercial and they will need to change it to light industrial for this. And it's ten acres, which doesn't meet the minimum district, or sorry, it's six acres, which does not meet the minimum district size of ten acres for a light industrial zoning district. So that's why we will need the variance today. So here you can see the property and the zoning. And it is also surrounded by agricultural zoning district. The property directly to the, to the west here and kind of surrounding is the Quahle property, which is on the other side of this property, kind of over here, is the property that the Crohn's are looking to purchase. So that's where we get the concerns from Alice Schaffer of Quahle, just with the proposed uses here. So when she says that there's, you know, similar businesses that will be located very close to each other, they they are just kind of on either side of the property there. We did have our public posting and there's two signs there because we're applying for a variance and for a zone map amendment today. And that brings us to our review criteria. So the first is that there are special circumstances or conditions fully described in the commission and board's findings, which are peculiar to the land or building for which the variance is sought and do not apply generally to land or buildings in the neighborhood, and have not resulted from any act of the applicant subsequent to the adoption of the zoning resolution. So currently, the commercial zone property is non-conforming because the minimum zoning district for commercial zoning districts is also ten acres. So by switching that zone map amendment here, like switching the zoning on this property would not increase the degree of non-conformity that's happening. We're really just kind of changing it to better suit the uses of the potential purchaser, but the degree of non-conformity won't be increased. It still will be non-conforming, but it's already currently non-conforming. We'd like to see people be able to use the property how they'd like. Second, for reasons fully set forth in the commission's and board's finding, the circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of the Sweetwater County's zoning resolution would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land or building, the granting of the adjustment is necessary, or the reasonable use thereof and the adjustment as granted is the minimum adjustment that would accomplish this purpose. So the property can be reasonably used, zoned as commercial. But the landowners do feel that changing the zoning to light industrial will make it more attractive to their potential purchaser and allow them to move forward with the use that they have in mind later on down the road, which would be as of right now, the idea is that they will also apply for a conditional use permit down the road for for a towing operation. The proposed variance is the minimum adjustment needed in order for the property owners to move forward with the zoning map amendment. Third is that the granting of the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning resolution and not will will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to public welfare. Staff doesn't see this request as being injurious to the neighborhood or the public welfare. This parcel again is located outside of the growth management area. It's not near any residential zoning districts. We did receive a, an agency comment from Pioneer Pipeline Company operated by Philip sixty-six that will just require the applicants or the the next purchaser, really. They'll need to remain in contact and work closely with Pioneer Pipeline Company, and we'll, we'll get into that just a little bit down the road, but it shouldn't have any negative impact on them. All right, so actually, we'll get to it right now. The the first comment here is from Jared Larson, Philip sixty-six, on behalf of Pioneer Pipeline Company. He states that Pioneer Pipeline Company has two pipelines across this tract with various right-of-way recorded against the property. Any work on the right-of-way would require Philip sixty-six's approval in writing and no permanent encroachments are allowed within twenty-five feet of either pipeline. Pioneer's pipeline right-of-way from nineteen fifty-two encovers, encumbers the entire parcel. And any development of this lot would require a partial release to more accurately define the right-of-way boundaries. And they wanted to note too that Pioneer does charge a fee for this type of release. I have forwarded all of the comments to the applicants, so they are aware of of the comments that we've received. Let's see, so then we have Alice Schaffer of Quahle Properties and largely the same, the same types of concerns that were brought up previously, just the concern about similar businesses near each other. Let's see. Concern about the natural gas pipeline corridor, which if they are working closely with Phillips Pioneer Pipeline, any of those people that are operating pipelines nearby, we think that they should be okay. Not sure what's happening to my presentation here. I know that, I I believe that another concern Alice brings up, and correct me if I'm wrong while this is still loading or whatever it is it's doing. She brings up whether or not YDOT knows what is being proposed here and if they have any concerns about that. And we have forwarded this proposal to YDOT and Darren Kaufman from YDOT did say he has no concerns about about this proposal. Brian Reed, Senior Mining Engineer, stated that the properties have no AML concerns with regard to abandoned historic mines. Joint Powers Water also, no comment there. And hopefully we can see now. And so that brings us to our staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval of the variance for minimum district size with the following condition, and that is that the variance is conditioned upon the approval of the proposed zone map amendment from commercial to light industrial by the Board of County Commissioners. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Cassidy. The applicant like to step forward? Okay. Can you introduce yourself for the record, please? Sorry.
My name is Brian Smith. I'm with Rock Springs Realty and I represent the buyer and the seller.
Okay.
So I'm just coming in to, to help facilitate the transaction.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I got a question. The right-of-way is not closer to six acres, correct? The right-of-way for the Bill's gas line. I mean, just so the property, the potential buyers know that I don't want them to, they only have six acres to deal with here to begin with, and if they're cut down with the twenty-five-foot easement or right-of-way, they, does it go across that property? Just so they know.
It does go across the property.
And it does affect, not like the middle of it. I just want to make sure that the property buyers.
It's the, it would be the north end of it.
Okay, so they would be out of the way. They could still use the
They could still use the
It'd be less than six acres they're going to be using at that point.
They're just, yeah.
And they're, they're, they're comfortable with that.
They're comfortable with it.
Okay. That was my only question.
All right, commission have any more questions for Mr. Smith? All right, thank you. All right. Does the commission have any questions for Cassidy or any comments? Okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. If anybody has any comments or now's, now's your time. Can you, sorry, we gotta you do, you have to, you have to tell us who we are for our, our minutes and stuff, so.
We don't have any concerns with a neighboring towing company. We often work closely with several companies here in Rock Springs. If one company doesn't have the proper equipment, it's great to have connections and be able to work closely with each other. So with us purchasing the property, we're welcoming another towing company with open arms.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else from the public?
I realize something with all these towing company, I got in the wrong business.
All right, so seeing and hearing none from the public, nobody else anyway, we'll close it to the public and I will open it back up to the commission.
I have nothing.
All right, I will entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion. We accept public hearing number four, the variance with staff recommendations.
All right, I got a motion to approve with staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I got a first and a second to approve with staff recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, thank you. Motion carries four to nothing. We will move on to the public hearing number five. Same applicant, it'll be the zoning map amendment from commercial to light industrial, and I will turn it back to Cassidy.
Great, thank you. This is also the same parcel that we're looking at here that we just did the variance on, so kind of skip some of that information, so we don't repeat too much here. So as I stated previously, they're looking to, the the property owners are looking to sell this property. They've got somebody lined up to meet that property owner's needs. They will need to change the zoning to I one for light industrial. And that will just help them be able to to do the uses that they would like to do there. So as previously stated, we know that this parcel is about six acres and it's surrounded by agricultural zoning. We do have six different review criteria for zone map amendments, so we'll go through those really quickly. The first is that the amendment encourages growth and, or sorry, the amendment is consistent and compatible with the current resolution and the comprehensive plan. Staff feels that it is. This is a good spot for, for these types of facilities to be happening. This is, you know, helping to contribute to the economic and social well-being of the county's residents. Second, the proposed zoning is suitable for the existing topography. And the proposed zoning and use is suitable for the existing topography there. Proposed zoning is compatible with existing or allowable uses of adjacent properties and neighboring zoning districts. Similar to when we discussed the zone map amendment for the Crohn's, this area or this parcel is surrounded by agricultural zoning, so and it's located outside of the growth management area, so this is compatible with the allowable uses of the adjacent properties. Fourth, that the proposed zoning can demonstrate adequate public facilities, and this site does have adequate facilities in existence. Fifth, the amendment shall not adversely affect adjacent properties, communities, or the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Sweetwater County. This amendment does not adversely affect adjacent properties. The property does not, but a less intense zoning district and does not fall within any special overly districts or the growth management area. Staff did receive a couple of different public agency comments raising concern over this amendment. However, the applicants have been informed of these things and we we feel okay with moving forward as long as the applicant is willing to work with the people that have commented. And it's really the same people that commented on the variance. Six is that the request conforms to the applicable provisions of the resolution. So the amendment will conform with the two thousand and fifteen Sweetwater County's zoning resolution upon approval of the proposed variance so that it, for the minimum district size. So we have the comment that we've previously discussed, Jared Larson, Philip sixty-six, on behalf of Pioneer Pipeline Company. And that's, and then the ones by Alice Schaffer feel that those have been addressed and that the applicants know to work closely with, with the people who have submitted these comments. And again, Darren Kaufman, YDOT states, no objections to this proposal. And that'll bring us to our staff recommendation. Staff recommends approval of the zone map amendment with the following conditions. First, that the zoning map amendment is conditioned upon the approval of the variance application for minimum district size by the Board of County Commissioners. And second, that the zoning of this parcel will revert to commercial if the parcel is not purchased. And that's all I have for this one.
Thank you. All right, we already heard from the applicant, but do you have anything you want to add? Alright, um, we already heard from the applicant, but do you have anything you want to add? Okay, we will, we won't make you come up then. Does uh, the commission have any questions for the applicant or for Cassidy? Alright, that will uh, I'll turn it over to the public. Um, this will be your time to uh, voice your opinion. Seeing none and hearing none, we'll close the uh, the public portion and I will uh. Does the, the commission have anything they want to? Any questions? Um, I do have one question. Um. For staff comments, your, your sec, or for your recommendation. Uh, the second one, uh, says the zoning of this parcel will revert to. Commercial use if the par- parcel is not purchased. To me, that seems like wide open because it could sell at any time from now forever. And so.
Yeah, okay, that's completely fair. We could, we can put, um, maybe if it's not purchased by the, the person that the um, Youngs have lined up. We can specify the, the purchaser.
Okay.
If that, that's, yeah, that's a great point. Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, anybody else from the commission? Alright, I will entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve uh, public hearing number five, uh, zoning map amendment.
Will that be with staff?
Oh, yeah, with staff recommendation, sorry about that.
Alright. I got a motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I got a second with uh. To approve with staff recommendations, um. It will uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Alright, motion carries four to nothing. Alright. That ends our uh, public hearings. Um. Do we have any other business, Cassidy?
We do not have any further business. We will have one public hearing for the month of May. So we'll, we'll see you guys then.
Alright, sounds good. Alright, having gone through the agenda and no other business, we will adjourn. Time is ten forty-eight.